Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Brant?
Here.
Frick?
Here.
Shield?
Here.
Greenway? Yes, we do have a quorum. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda that we have for tonight's meeting.
I'd like to motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
And motion in second to approve our agenda tonight. Roll call, please. Brant?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Greenway? Yes. Item number three is the approval of the minutes from our September, whoops, our August 12th board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes if there are no corrections?
Motion. I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 11th, 2025, regular school board meeting as presented. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve those minutes. Roll call, please. Frick?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Greenway? Yes. Right, this is the point of the meeting where if any board member has any conflict of interest directly or indirectly with any item on the agenda, please let us know. Hearing none. Item number six is the consent agenda. Does any board member have anything they would like to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve it.
Kathy, one minute.
Yep.
Shereen, could you elaborate a little bit on the Sourcewell and how we came up with them as our provider for the number H for the generator purchase?
Sourcewell is, so we go through different vendors. Sourcewell's a procurement method and we're able to use them as they go out and they try to find the best price for certain products. And they're part of a Sourcewell contract and we're part of that. And so they go out and they do that part so then we can get the best price possible and that generator falls under that for the high school.
Thank you.
All right, I got a little ahead of myself and I apologize because the staple was on number five. So, Shereen, did we have anybody sign up for public comment tonight?
No, not tonight.
All right, thank you. Now I'll hop back to the consent agenda. Just anything further with that or was that okay?
No, I appreciate that. I think it was good to just sort of, so people know what Sourcewell is and what we're doing with it.
Perfect. Okay, any other questions on any consent agenda item? Then I would ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda or the consent, yeah, the consent agenda.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda item. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Brant?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Greenway? Yes. Item number seven is good news and student achievement. And Melanie?
Good evening.
You're going to start us off tonight.
Right, thank you for having me. So, kind of monumental, right? First Trailhead happenings at a school board meeting, so we have so much to talk about. I'll try to talk quickly and I limited to about six or seven things, so we'll get started here. Just in case no one has heard anything about transportation at Trailhead, I thought we might as well start with that right off the bat. So, I told Dr. Kendall earlier, I don't know what it takes to become certified in traffic control, but I feel like I'm really close to being there. Whatever that endorsement may be, I'm looking to sign up for it. So, but all jokes aside, this is just kind of, this is a view from one of our second floor windows. This is getting near to, this is right about three o'clock on an afternoon. So, you'll see the right lane, like over on the right side of the screen, the white truck right there. So, that lane all the way around is our right lane. Those are parents for junior kindergarten and kindergarten that are lining up, ready to pick up kids. And then pretty much directly behind that right, that white van would be where what we call our loopers, where our loopers start. So, we have, I'm, you know, I'm sure you read all about us the first couple of days or the first week. We have drastically improved and changed our pickup and drop-off schedule. And if you hear otherwise, they haven't been there recently. So, we admit the first day, days were awful. They were bad. Parents didn't know what they were doing. We didn't know what they were doing. Our little five-year-olds didn't know what they were doing. We met after the very first day. I think we met for an hour. And we made changes. After the second day, we met for 45 minutes and made changes and we just continue to make improvements. I think when I look back at our list, we've made 20, over 25 changes to our drop-off and pickup. We've, I think we've made or are making over 12 changes to signage and painting. Just some things that weren't jiving with how, you know, we were doing it or to make things easier. To give you perspective, after school, we have 24 to four adults outside after school. I think at Webster School, we might have had three. So, it just kind of gives you perspective of how it's all hands on deck. Outside before school, we have 11 of us adults out there. One thing that we've done is about three or four different times, we've tracked vehicles after school just to see how long are people really waiting. We wait anywhere between a minute, depending on where we're parked, to about 11 or 12 minutes. So, really, let's put that into perspective, right? And that's from dismissal time. That doesn't include, you know, that first black Jeep that pulled up at probably about 1:55. We're talking from dismissal time until, as we pull in to our property and as we pull out. And I honestly don't know, after 19 years at Webster School, if you could have ever pulled in, parked, got out, walked and get your kids, walked them back to the car and pulled out of there without losing a side view mirror in 11, 12, 13 minutes. So, we're really proud of that and it's working well. The system is working well. Before we started, one of our mentor schools in Minnesota, Principal Dan, told me, Melanie, it's going to take six weeks. It's going to be bad for six weeks. And today was, I don't know, day 13 or 14. And I told Dr. Kendall, I called the last car that was there at 3:27 today. We dismiss at 3:20. I would say there really was no one left in the parking lot if they were there and ready by 3:32. So, it's a good system. It's working. If we can keep parents to keep their phones down, to keep it moving, and if we can get them to pull up and have their car posters ready, it's really quite beautiful. And overall, the thing that we want to keep emphasizing is that it's safe for kids. So, these are five and six-year-olds that we're talking about. We have none of them darting out in between vehicles. None of them are walking in the parking lot by themselves. So, it's, it's safe, which is what's most important.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
Maybe just a couple of things. First of all, just kudos to Mrs. Reich and her staff. I was out there the first through the worst part of it, the first week, and like you said, a lot of adjustments made. But not only is it, we have to think about safety, slow down. I mean, I'm gonna be honest, I told some people that this isn't a racetrack out here. And so, you know, we want to make sure our kids are safe, one. And two, if you look at the big picture of all this, it's not so much about pickup and drop-off. It's about what happens in that building every day. And so, let's put it all into perspective and just keep our eye on the prize. And the prize are the kids in the building and what happens there every day. And we've got a couple of those great teachers sitting right here. And so, just want to thank them and everybody involved.
Thank you. So, yeah, that's my next slide. This is, this is the beauty of Trailhead right here, the learning environment. And, and these environments, and you can get a little glimpse of that, but we're realizing that they're super collaborative. They're flexible for kids. They offer kids choices visually clutter. We're pretty much clutter-free. Just, just lots of options and they're just spacious. You can click to the next one, Shereen, just to give you a couple more glimpses of that. But right, like this is what it's all about when you're three, four, or five years old at Trailhead. So, Mrs. Miller just started library last week and this week they started checking out books. So, this is just a little glimpse of our media center, which I might remind you, for those of you who have been there, is the heart of our building. This is really the beautiful part when you walk in. And our cafeteria, to say that we've made tweaks in this area is an understatement. Lots of tweaks. Hard to believe that these little five-year-old hands can hang on to those trays, but look at this. You know, they're like middle and high schoolers. They walk through the line. They stopped with Mrs. Enfield to get their name to her. We empty our own trash and we put our tray up on the, on the ledge. We just don't require the lining up like the middle school does of the, you know, the shapes. We just can put them up there. So, that, that was taking us a little, little extra time. But this is, this is really cool. The picture on the bottom left, the little girl with the pizza, the, the staff, we thought it was Charlie's Pizza. We, they're preparing that food right there, right? We've never seen this before, so. That's the cafeteria. The gym has been used every single afternoon for PE and gross motor. And then the bottom pictures, I'm sure that you've heard, but the middle school volleyball players have been utilizing the gym for practice due to a gym issue over at YMS. And then I think today, we already got our second request for rentals for basketball teams, so. The playground is safe. It's spacious enough. And the most beautiful thing is that it's enclosed. There is a fence all the way around the playground, which is probably what we enjoy most. So, we love the playground. And then really, and I might get just a little bit emotional, but I want you to take a look at, you know, the people in this picture. And if you see them, if they teach your child, if your neighbor's with them, to say that they have put in time is an understatement. They've been open-minded. They've been flexible. They have made changes. They've worked and worked and worked. And it's really been my pleasure to work alongside of them. But the time has been immense. And so, I'd just like to give a big shout out to the entire staff at Trailhead. That's it. Any questions or comments?
All right, thank you, Melanie. Any questions for Melanie?
My only comments are thank you for all the work that all of you have done and the whole district as a whole to make it happen. And thank you for being flexible to not only you guys, but then to our community as well as we make changes. As much as you can plan some of it, you gotta just learn as you go and make those changes. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna pizzazz you a little bit because usually I never have pictures. So, at the middle school, we added that, this Agri Voyage class a couple of years ago. If you remember when I was presenting it for our course catalog. And they went on a field trip on Friday to Field to Table, if anybody is familiar with it. There's a farmer outside of Gayville that hosts a lot of different schools. So, our Agri Voyage class got to go out there and you can see the different things that they got to use. The cool thing about this is that it also aligns with the South Dakota standards for CTE. So, that's kind of a cool thing too. But the kids got to have a lot of hands-on activities, learning different parts of farming. So, that was pretty cool. And then the next thing too is we had the Mount Marty on their giving day. We had a bunch of Mount Marty students come and help with the Agri Voyage class. The top pictures are what we have right now in our courtyard. And if any of you know much about our courtyard, it's kind of underutilized. Maybe in the past, when I was in high school, they might have put goats in there at one time, but that's a whole nother story. But anyway, we wanted to actually utilize them. So, it's a slow and steady pace that we're going here. But we added, you know, they came and added to our landscape. So, we really appreciate Mount Marty coming over and helping us and the Agri Voyage kids. And they actually, the kids are so excited because I don't think kids really do a lot of yard work, but they thought it was the coolest thing that they got to do this and they actually asked for mowers. So, I thought that was really good. And Mrs. Olson, this is all on her. She does a great job. They actually planted some things. I can't really tell you what they planted, but it didn't look like weeds. That's all I know. And so, they had some corn. Actually, they had some corns and some soybean because we have the class in the spring where they plant and then the fall they get to harvest it. So, just little, little, not anything big. But it's, thank you for allowing us to have this class because it's been actually really, really good for the middle school students. And I would have a third slide with our gym, but I think part of it is in customs still. So, we're, that's to be determined. But hopefully, by the time Mr. Decker comes to present, you'll see before and after of that too. So, great things happening at YMS.
So, ju- just a comment about the middle school. Just, so, we started a project to putting in a new floor in the old gym. And it's about three-quarters of the way done, maybe. But we're waiting for a part of the floor to come in. So, it's on hold. And in the meantime, some of the volleyball's out at Trailhead. So, it all worked out.
We're being flexible. That's our theme for this year is flexible or punting, whatever you want to do. It's football season.
Very good. Thank you. All right, just adding on then, one additional good news is I know last month, we did not have Amy Schmidt here, but we do have her tonight. So, I'm going to ask her to come forward and just introduce herself and let us know how things are going with your new position.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time. My name is Amy Schmidt and I come to you with 16 years of elementary teaching experience. I've taught pre-K, first grade for a majority of my year, second, third, and a small stint in fourth. I've also stepped outside of the classroom and been a behavioral teacher for an elementary school of just over 600 kids. I've had some specialized training through the University of South Dakota Center for Disabilities and writing functional behavioral assessments as well as behavioral intervention plans. It's been a great start to the school year. We're getting Lincoln and everything rolling with my new position and just new relationships with those teachers. And so, I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself and then thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any comments or questions for Mrs. Schmidt? Welcome and thank you for joining Yankton School District. Item number eight on our agenda is the four plus one student teaching program. And Dr. Jennifer Weber is here to give us a presentation. So, welcome, Dr. Weber.
Great, thank you so much. Mount Marty is here with my colleagues here in the back. My name is Dr. Jennifer Weber. I'm the Department Chair of Teacher Education. And we are super excited about the four plus one student teaching model as a way to kind of change the landscape. You can advance. You can read this, but basically, this slide is here to tell you that we are in a teacher shortage. The, there's a national teacher shortage. There's a South Dakota one. And if you look at the data under South Dakota in the center, this was unfilled positions. The 25, 26 has not yet been released. But you'll notice that the 137 from last year, so basically across the state, there were 137 positions that were unfilled. And that number went significantly down. But one of the things that we noted was that they go down, but also what's going down is the requirements to get a teaching license, right? So, we in teacher education, just generally, we know the number one predictor of student success is a quality teacher. We want teachers who will stay, well-prepared and trained teachers stay. And so, we were trying to, constantly trying to be working with this. Yankton School District had, in 2021, they did a sign-on bonus and increased pay for substitute teachers. And so, this was, we see it here in the Midwest. We don't, we don't, we're not hit quite like other places. But we have definitely felt, you guys, I should say, have definitely felt the teacher shortage in terms of trying to get subs and people in spaces. And we know that we need to develop competent young professionals. And so, we were facing this rub a little bit in that when you have a student teacher in your building, they are like as, almost as qualified as you possibly can be before actually getting qualified. So, we were trying to work through, how can we help you? How can you help us make sure that our teachers are qualified when they graduate? In House Bill 1092, it came across the stage, probably we found out about it in about April. And what this did was that this created a pot of funds across the state of South Dakota that could be dispersed to districts who applied for said funds. And those said funds were to actually pay student teachers. So, one of the things that we found in teacher preparation is that that semester or year, if you have that, Mount Marty does not, is a very expensive semester because they can't work. And so, it's keeping them from choosing teaching, right? So, there's all of these initiatives happening to increase the teachers that are being prepared. And what we were told was that in July to August, the districts could apply for these grants. And we still don't know when those are going to be dispersed. But here's what we were told from the state. There's not enough money for every district and there's not enough money for every student teacher. So, we were told this. So, we were trying to venture into this when we first started having conversations with the Yankton School District about like, would you be willing to pay our student teachers if they could, you could get these funds? Go ahead and advance. So, what we did was we started thinking, we had been having multiple conversations with some different principals and different things about how can we help you, you help us? And we decided, maybe this is a great opportunity for a new partnership. Go ahead and advance. And what we determined was the four plus one student teaching model. We see it as innovative. We see it as collaborative. We see it as a great approach to teacher preparation while maintaining integrity of the student teaching experience. So, what this looks like, and Mount Marty does a one semester student teaching. So, when it comes to subbing, we were very worried about giving up days, right? Because other institutions, they do a year-long and that gives, you know, some, some freedom in those kinds of things. So, we really wanted to maintain that. So, what we, what we agreed to was a four-day of student teaching and a one day of substitute teaching for the district. And that would, that one day of substitute teaching would be on a consistent day so that the student teacher, together with their cooperating teacher, could always plan for that, right? So, there wouldn't be like a pulling of teachers to go to different places to solve problems. But it would be, you would get this like pot of teachers who could do the subbing for you. And it would maintain the integrity with the, with the amount of days that we wanted them to be student teaching. Go ahead. We see this as a win-win for us and for you. It was able to provide stipends. Dr. Kendall came when we made this proposal and he agreed to pay our student teachers whether or not they did get the funds because we still don't know if he'll get the funds from the state. So, that was a win-win for us. It also allows for 12, approximately 12 paid student teaching days for each of the student teachers who are placed in the Yankton School District. And they can, some of our student teachers will be student teaching in the spring semester. So, we're hoping to spread the love there a little bit. So, to give you the most number of days for your students. This promotes high-quality teacher preparation because it doesn't hurt the integrity of the student teaching experience in terms of pulling teachers. They're still with their cooperating teacher a majority of the time and they know when they're not going to be. And then it also encourages innovative service, right? So, I had gotten note from one of my teachers already that there's a baby born and so, they're trying to figure out what the student teaching days are going to be and what the sub-days are going to be. So, I'm being innovative about solving those problems where you have a, a really high-quality substitute teacher in the building. And then we just think builds community-rooted collaboration. We are so grateful to the Yankton School District. They're so good to us. We need you. And so, we just think this is a great way for us to serve you and our student, our student teachers get quality training through you as well. So, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Weber or the program?
I was just curious, numbers of student teachers for this year for each semester, just looking ahead?
Yes. So, as you know, Mount Marty is small. And the other, the one thing before I tell you the numbers, the one thing to know too is that this whole agreement came after we had made requests out, right? So, and we, we work with a lot of different districts. So, Yankton right now this fall has five. And we're looking at having two in the spring. Yeah.
So, I did not want to interrupt you, but I did talk to our Secretary of Education, Dr. Graves, today. And he said, oh, hasn't anybody told you, Yankton is one of the schools that will receive stipends? So, just got that confirmed this afternoon. And so, I wanted to just point out too that, you know, with seven student teachers at a minimum of 12 days, that's 84 days of substitutes that we haven't had. And so, we think that that's really great. And, you know, we hope that next year there's even more. But 5,000 of that will be paid by the state. And then we budgeted a few thousand dollars to take this program on and continue it because we think it's a great investment. And not only will they get that stipend, help me, was it at the end of the semester or the end of the year?
The end of their semester. So, if they
So, if their first semester, yep. So, the other thing that we talked about was that not only is it good for us to get substitutes, but in addition to see them, seeing them student teaching, we'll also have an opportunity to see them teach as a teacher with a classroom. And we hope that these Mount Marty students who are in their final year of education will also hopefully be candidates for some of our positions. And so, we have a lot invested here. Mount Marty does. And we hope that we can just do really great with this and build our candidate pool and also our substitute pool. So, thank you.
Two things about what you just said. I just, just today, I had, we, and we get these emails literally daily where there's a district that's looking for this person. There's a district, like I had, today's was, we're looking for a math teacher for next August. Right? And I get these literally every day. And we're posting them for our students every day. But my juniors, when they asked me why I was so dressed up, because I don't normally dress up like this. And they said, why are you so dressed up? And I said, well, I'm going to the school board meeting and, and to talk about the four plus one program. So, the juniors were asking me, you know, about this program. And every one of them was like, oh, my gosh, this is awesome. I'm totally requesting Yankton. So, it's, it's a, it's a win-win for everyone.
Yeah, and I would even add win-win-win-win because it also, not only the institutions themselves, but for the individuals to have an opportunity to teach without another teacher, you kind of have to spread your wings a little bit and be on your own feet. And then a win for the students as well to have someone who has had all, almost all of the educational training to be a teacher. So, thank you for all of your work in putting this together and it's a fantastic opportunity for our district.
I have one more point that I think could be made. Can you just talk a little bit about the requirement that the student teachers had to follow with the state certification? Because I think that's important.
That was chaos. So, codified law says that a student teacher cannot be paid. So, that was the hurdle that the state was trying to overcome. So, what they did was they created a permit and it's called the student teaching permit. And it costs the students to get the permit. So, that was one of the like little hurdles that we were having was I hated to send them all out to go get a permit if they weren't going to be able to, to receive anything because of that. So, they actually had to apply through, through the state of South Dakota to get a permit. What's nice about that is it will fast-track their licensure when they go to get their license. So, that will, they'll already be in the system and everything. And everyone is now qualified under the student teaching permit. Once they have their first one-month evaluation with the university, that's when their subbing will, will start.
And to your point on the certification, I went into teacher 411 and I looked up a couple of the students that we're going to have. And it's, they're in the 411 system already. So, it will expedite their processing, their certification.
Big time. It was a little bit of a mess because we didn't find out like all the details until they left. And this is the kind of thing we like to do together. So.
Absolutely. It's a great opportunity and we really appreciate the collaboration and the ingenuity to be able to make this happen. So, we're excited to see our new student teachers come in to the classroom.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us. All right, as this is an action item, I would open it up for a motion to accept the the teaching program four plus one.
I motion to approve the four plus one student teaching model agreement with Mount Marty University.
Second.
Second, all right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Brant?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Greenway? Yes. Next up on our agenda is to go through the policies. A couple of them are going to be our second reading. And then Sheila is here to give us some information on a couple new ones that have been added. I'll start out with A. We had this last month, just with the changing of the elementary school boundaries due to the closure of Webster and then our new TLC. Has anyone had any questions or need any other clarification on that? If not, I'm just going to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve that particular agenda item.
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Shield?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Greenway? Yes. And then B is And then B is the one that we heard about with the occupancy room privacy. Any further questions or concerns in regards to that one? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve that one that we heard first last month.
I motion to approve the single sex multi occupancy room privacy policy.
And a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the single sex multi occupancy room privacy policy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Brant?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. So item C is acceptable use policy that we are going to talk about. And Sheila's, this is our first read and Sheila is here to provide an overview and answer any questions that we might have.
This is just a technical change to this policy to match what we did actually with the library materials policy. I realized that we probably needed to add it to the acceptable use policy as well. We've already updated the acceptable use policy last year to address any obscenity issues and privacy issues and those types of things. And I just added the statute that was updated this year to it.
Very good, any questions for Sheila? All right, then I'll just have you go on to D, which is the public comment policy.
Sure, it has been a bit since the school board updated its public comment policy, so much so that Mr. Frick caught that it still said school board meetings start at five thirty, which might explain why I'm always late. We just did a few updates to this. There's been a lot of, over the last five years, a lot of issues about public comments at meetings and freedom of speech and how that process should work. But on these changes, what we did is I updated electronic meetings. They were just telephone is what it said in the previous draft and just updated it to include video conference, which is allowed by statute. We also, talking with the board president a little bit, made it clear on how the public can ask to have items added to the agenda. So that's in section seven, section seven A. It's just pulled out in five business days before a meeting, talked to the superintendent and then the board president and the superintendent decide if it'll be on that meeting or how it will be handled. Also clarified, and this is in a lot of school district policies, and it wasn't explicit in ours, but that anything that's confidential, if it was a matter involving a student or a personnel matter or those types of things, public can still comment on it, but it would have to be an executive session because those matters can't be discussed in a public meeting. The other thing we did was, there was, you know, lawyers love language. And so there's a lot of debate in a lot of these cases about what's obscene and what's vulgar and what's mean. You know, those types of words can be kind of trigger words for the First Amendment. And we have a real good policy here already that addresses, you know, the process, you know, the three minutes, the signing up in advance and being respectful and those types of things. And so what we did is we took a lot of that language out. Doesn't mean people can come in here and start swearing up a blue streak or screaming and yelling or those types of things. But just to avoid any concerns, you know, the whole key as a public body is that you're viewpoint neutral. So if someone wants to come in here and praise something or criticize something, they have an equal opportunity to do that. And our policy is three minutes and up to fifteen minutes per topic. And as long as we enforce that fairly for everyone consistently, that's all the law requires. So it was just more some tweaks. I think it's been, what did I say Kathy, twenty years at least, if not more, since we've looked at that policy, so.
Yeah, I think at least fifteen.
Yeah.
All right, any questions for Sheila in regards to that policy? I appreciate your time in making sure and going through it and Justin for catching the five thirty. You know, those are just things that get away from us and we don't see. So appreciate your time keeping us compliant and making sure we're following the law with that. So we will have that back on our agenda next month to be able to vote on that. In the meantime, if there's any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Item number ten on our agenda, thank you Sheila. Item number ten is to adopt the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school district budget. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sh- Shereen first or do you wanna be first?
I think I'm first and, yeah. Excuse me. So we work on this budget a long time and we have board workshops in the spring. And of course, we had two new school board members who joined us. So we had a couple of extra meetings to get them on board with our budget. But tonight is the official time where we'll adopt the budget, which will include the capital outlay, which will be a second item here. But I think probably the most exciting news that we have tonight is to talk about our opt-out. And, you know, during these six years, I don't know if you can pull that up a little bit better. But this is, this is the last six years, including the bottom one, which is what we're talking about tonight. One of the things that we told the public was that anytime during our opt-out, that if there was an opportunity not to have to take the maximum amount, that we would not do that, that we would be good stewards of the public's money. And yet, we would also not shortchange our kids with any kind of programming. And tonight I can tell you that, as you can see up here, for the current twenty-five, twenty-six school budget, we will take half the opt-out. And so when people look at their taxes payable for twenty twenty-six, when they get their tax bill in twenty twenty-six, they should be able to go to the school portion where it says opt-out because it is listed separately, because it is an opt-out. And that should reflect half of what you've paid in the prior taxes. And we think that there's not a better time to do it. There's a lot going on right now for families and people in business and ag and all sectors, you know, that that people work in and deal with. So we're really pleased to be able to do that, to announce that tonight, that we'll take half of the opt-out. And so I'm gonna let Shereen talk a little bit about the budget and if there are any questions, feel free to ask.
So I'm gonna go off a little bit with Dr. Kendall said. Here's kind of a spreadsheet that's created to kind of explain our taxes that we get for our school. We fall in two school years, so we fall in twenty-five and twenty-six. Taxpayers, so when we say we're only taking half of the taxpayers, you're gonna see the difference right here in twenty-six. Here, this box is us in twenty-six, we have half July through December of twenty-five still there, which is picking up the second half of the full amount. And then January through June is what we're proposing tonight is only half. If you see this plus this, that gives you your fiscal twenty-six for taxpayers. So it's kind of difficult because we fall in different periods of time than you guys pay taxes. Your January through December, ours is July through June. So I just kind of wanted to explain that a little bit. This has been the easiest way to explain it when people are wondering, how is that possible? Your budget says this, but you, you know, taxpayers, when does it help us, the taxpayers? So that kind of explains a little bit better on our fiscal year compared to the taxpayers' fiscal year. Do you have any questions on this diagram? Kind of just kind of listed out a little bit better so you can see the difference.
It's a good visual.
Yeah, because it's, it gets confusing because we're on two different kinds of budgets. All right.
I would say that Shereen and I have argued many times over this slide, believe me. And she has been right ninety percent of the time. So, and she knows it and I give her full credit for that.
We have to think about it every single time, but we're getting better, I'm getting better at it. All right, so then we're gonna go back to what we're here to approve and let me get back to the agenda. And so the proposed budget, which you've seen over and over again since May, this is just what we have the action to do. We, by state law, you need to take action by September's board meeting and that's what this is. So these are your expenses and then the other one is your, oops, your means of finance. But you've seen this document multiple times, but this is the official adopting it. And do you have any questions?
All right, Shereen, when we make this motion, do you need us to read to you the recommended action? Or can we just refer to the motion with the language in the recommended action? Which would you prefer for?
It's okay, you can just refer to it.
Thank you.
I had to look at our legal counsel for a second, so just making sure.
All right, perfect. So with with that, I would open it up for a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school district budget per the recommended action language that is listed there.
I make a motion to adopt the school district budget for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-two six school year.
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second and a further discussion on the budget. Hearing none, roll call please.
Frick?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. So the second part of the school district budget is the five-year capital outlay plan as well. So I will entertain any comments that you might have in regards to that, that you want to share with us, Shereen?
So on there, you'll see our five years. I did, there were a few changes. You can get close to accurate as you get further into, you know, September. We did add the street. We will partner with Yankton, the city, to repair Nineteenth Street from the summit. So there, that part of the portion of it's in there now. Our bleachers are in there, that's gonna happen this summer. And then the middle school floor was budgeted last year, but because it's happening now, you've heard comments on the middle school floor, it now is moved into the appropriate budget year, which is this year. So you'll see that dollar amount change. Also, that generator that you've seen on the procurement, that's also in there. So there's some changes, that's the differences that you'll see in the figures is those bigger top, those items that we were able to add since we are adopting it. Is that, any questions on that?
Any questions for Shereen on that, comments? Dr. Kendall?
Yeah, I do have one comment. With the public seeing this, I would tell you that this document here doesn't tell the whole story. We'll have the entire five-year capital outlay posted. It's multiple pages by year for the next five years. So it's more than one page, it's several pages. And one of the things that we're really proud of in Yankton is that, you know, we have a comprehensive five-year plan and it is also fluid so that we can move things if we need to, we have some flexibility there. But we really try to stay on important things like roofing projects and, you know, maybe some carpet areas, some flooring that needs to be redone. But this allows us a lot of flexibility. And again, I just thank everybody that gets involved with this because it's a lot of work to put it together. But we're really proud of what we have because it's an aggressive plan. It keeps us moving forward and that's one thing that I think we've done a great job with as a district, is moving forward with projects and not borrowing from Peter to pay Paul. And I just think we do a tremendous job with our budgeting, both in the general fund and the capital outlay.
Very good, thank you. With that, I would open it up and entertain a motion to approve the five-year capital outlay plan for twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty.
Motion to approve the five-year capital outlay plan for twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the five-year capital outlay plan. Any further comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Brant?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. Item number eleven on our agenda is the tax levy request to authorize our tax levy. And Shereen, I will let you talk about that for us.
So this is done every September and it's per state, recommendations for the levies set by the state. You also notice the half of the opt-out is sitting there too. That part right there is a big thing that we change accordingly. And the rest is pretty much set by the state as far as the rates. Capital outlay may, you've seen, it's an estimate, it may change. The official numbers haven't come out yet, so you'll see a difference if, on the next board meeting if they have those finalized. It's just an estimate right now.
All right, very good, thank you. Any questions for Shereen in regards to the tax levy? Then hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the tax levy request as listed in the recommended action verbiage.
Move to approve the tax levy request.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the tax levy request. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Shield?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. Last item on our agenda is to hear a progress report on our summer projects. And Rob Taylor is here to go through all those notes and information for us.
Cover, cover what we can on it. Thank you, everyone. I wanted to start off with, I just kind of listed them out, going through our projects for the summer. Starting with Stewart School, we ended up getting carpet in six new room, uh, six rooms got new carpet. They're not new rooms. In addition to getting the carpet in the rooms, Cody requested that we do some transitions going into the hallways because they're worried about kids tripping. So we added those on to the new carpeted rooms this year as well as the five rooms we did last year. So all those were taken care of. On the east side playground, maintenance spent several weeks out there. The playground was breaking up. It was, it's a plastic type material that a lot of the structures made out of. And over the years from the heat, the sun, the winter and the cold, we had a lot of cracks. And we ended up reaching out to the company. They did warranty all the, the needed supplies. We had to pay for the shipping and do the work ourselves. But the maintenance team did a great job rebuilding that playground and making it safe for the kids out there at Stewart. From there, I'll jump on to the high school where we also did thirteen rooms of carpet on the second floor in the math wing. They were completed earlier this summer. The roof project, if you've seen it or you haven't been by there recently, is underway. It's running about two months behind. They were actually delayed due to welded seam material that was not available apparently nationwide. So they had to wait for it to be produced or shipped, like we're waiting for the middle school flooring issue. So that material came in and they got busy on that project. It should be completed to the ninety percent mark with nothing, nothing left, but some sheet metal work by the end of next week. The other thing we had done, the elevator near the teachers wing, that got retrofitted this summer and that was completed just about three to four weeks ago, just before school started. All the electronics and mechanical components in the elevator, the car looks the same when you look at it. But basically, it's got a new engine and transmission and drivetrain. It's ready to grow for another twenty-five to thirty years before we should have to do any work on that. The gym floors at the high school, the middle school and the boys and girls club were all resurfaced and refinished this year. And last thing for the high school was they get a fire alarm upgrade, which is still in progress. Wasn't completed due to the electricians were busy elsewhere in the town of Yankton, including working at our middle school. That is being done in the SAC Center area and it does not affect the daily operations of the alarm or the school while they complete that work. Move on to Crane Field, we had the annual deep cleaning done for the, the surface out there, for the field, for the students and our athletes to play on. So it gets a deep cleaning by the actual installers each year. That was done once again. And in addition to getting that done out there, we made some improvements. If you didn't make it to the first game, you will see them when you get out there. We fenced in underneath the entire grandstand, make it a little safer and limit the access to kids and so forth who were running and playing underneath there a lot during the games. We were worried one of them was gonna get hurt under there, so we thought it best if we fenced that area off. And then we removed all the rock that was underneath the grandstands as well and we filled that in with concrete that had several purposes, including reducing the mud and the increasing, the ability of water to drain from underneath there and limiting, once again, the rocks that the kids like to pick up and throw during the games underneath the grandstands. So multifaceted, but it worked out really well and it looks good. So if you get the opportunity, stop by and see it if you haven't been to a game yet. Onto the middle school, as Heather said, they're doing some work in the courtyard, so I did cancel the goats. They won't be coming in. Over a hundred and seventy lockers were replaced upstairs in the second floor west hallway. They're phasing out the mauve peach color, is that what it mauve? Okay, mauve color. And we're getting gray- And we're getting gray throughout the entire school. We got one more hallway to do and then that project will be complete on both floors. I assume maybe next year, we'll see. So, uh, that was done at the, the middle school. And then, uh, the gym flooring, we already discussed, that project was late added on and we've got it going, but they, uh, are about seventy-five, eighty percent complete. We're still waiting on some type of hardened flooring that'll go underneath the bleachers. Once that's done, um, it's gonna look really good. It looks like actual wood gym floor, but it's a rubberized, uh, sports floor surface. It's safer for kids, uh, than the old concrete and hard tile that we had in there before. Excuse me. Oh, middle school also had a fire alarm upgrade. Middle school got the, um, what wing is that down that, uh, by the library? Seventh grade? Seventh grade wing got its fire alarm upgrade done this summer. Um, that's year two of the five-year plan that's being done there. Trailhead Learning Center, we're happy to say that the, the digital sign as well as the memorial sign are both complete. The, uh, electrical work was done, all the lights are put in, so it's looking really good out there. Administrative building, we finally got the painting done this Saturday, so we got some new artwork that's gonna be going up in here in the next week or so, so it'll look even better when you get back next month. And then the last, for one of the big projects we do, if you didn't notice already, we moved the Webster Music Building, uh, from Webster and it's sitting in front of the CMTEA building. And that's a temporary location until we have our new spot prepared and a foundation poured out by the softball fields and we do some improvements out there and I'm gonna move it to that location. And that's all I have unless anybody has anything else.
They're out of the paint mauve color for the future years for Heather. Shoot.
Done with the mauve colors. White and gray.
I had it when I was there, I'm sure Heather had it, I'm sure that when it was a high school. What? It was after that eighties. Well, thank you for all your work that you've done and all of your staff.
Sounds like it was plenty busy over the summer, so we appreciate.
The maintenance team worked really hard to keep everything going, uh, outside the, the larger product, projects that, uh, were listed here. They stayed busy all summer and they're still working to this day. And I gotta give kudos to Mr. Dave Greenway who helped me with the painting here immensely. Cause him and I had to move all the furniture for the painters. And because the building never closes, each office had to be used daily. So we would come in early and stay late to move furniture out and move furniture back in after the painters came in and painted each day. So it took us a while to get through, but they finished the building Saturday. So thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you. Appreciate all the work together to get that done. All right, item number thirteen is adjournment of the meeting. I would take a motion. Unless you wanna stay?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.